We are in the disro with liberty and justice for all. May we have a vote?
Mr. Flynn?
Here.
Mr. Reichman?
Here.
Mr. Edder?
Here.
Mr. Kessler?
Here.
Ms. Fields?
Here.
And George, just so you know, when you talk into that, you have to hit the one that's in the middle. And then everything has to turn on red to make sure, yeah, that's on.
Can I leave it on?
Yeah, if you guys make sure you're talking to them because last meeting, we just had, nobody turned the mic on and I couldn't hear anything.
Maybe that's a, is a good meeting.
Well, they were short, the minutes were short.
Okay. That's good. Uh, so, uh, could I have a motion to approve the agenda this evening?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Kelly?
Call roll.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Reichman?
Yes.
Mr. Edder?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Could I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting for September 21st, 2022?
I'm happy to make a motion to approve last month's minutes.
Second.
Mr. Flynn?
Abstain?
Mr. Reichman?
Abstain.
Mr. Edder?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Okay, so at this time, uh, we're gonna open up the public hearings. Um, we're gonna start with case Sims number 2022-04, Snyder Road Townhomes. May we hear from staff, please?
Yes, Dean, Brian Snyder, Department of State Services and Leadership. You should have a copy of the Regional Planning Commission's staff report for this amendment case. As you stated, it's 2022-04 Snyder Road Townhomes. This is a request for a zone change from A residence to DD planned multiple residence. Excuse me, the purpose is to construct a 20-unit townhome development on the property with, um, associated parking access drives and a driveway from Snyder Road. The history on this site, you'll probably be very familiar with, it was just here for a different zone change, um, earlier this year, um, sorry, in 2021. And then, um, that recommendation, or that proposal was for an 80-unit apartment complex, um, located within one three-story building. Um, that request was denied by the Board of Trustees in April of this year. The applicant is now proposing 20 attached single-family townhomes within four buildings. Um, the density of the project would be 5.72 units to the acre. There would be two buildings with six attached townhomes and two buildings that would contain four townhomes, um, located to the north and south of a common entry drive that would come in off of Snyder Road. The process for zone changes is laid out by state law. It first goes to the Regional Planning Commission, it then comes to the Sims Township Zoning Commission. Uh, both commissions make a recommendation to the Sims Township trustees who have the final decision. Um, so following tonight's meeting, whatever your recommendation to the, um, trustees, they will then set their public hearing, um, and hold a public hearing to decide whether to approve or deny the zone change, um, request. So that's the process. Starts with a, um, informal public staff review conference, though. Before we begin the formal process, we require the applicant to go through that informal meeting with the neighbors. Um, that was held on August 10th, 2022. Um, there were several issues that were raised, um, including the building height, changes to the plan between the time that they got the mailing and the time that it was being submitted, um, and then whether the units would be rental or condominium. Traffic, um, was also discussed, um, at length at that meeting. The applicant subsequently, subsequently applied for the zone change and began the process. Staff prepared the report that you have in front of you. The first part of the analysis is the land use consistency. Um, the Regional Planning Commission has an adopted plan for Sims Township, which is current according to their bylaws. It was last adopted in 2020. Um, the site is designated for attached single-family, um, which is defined as moderate-density attached single-family dwellings and related compatible uses. Typically attached dwellings such as townhomes or fee simple condominiums at a minimum floor area of 1,200 square, square feet, uh, brick facade having individual entrances at grade, attached integral garages, um, that are higher density than single-family residents. And mass and scale of attached single-family residents should be similar to that of surrounding uses. So staff reviewed this for consistency with that designation. The 5.72 units to the acre would be moderate density, um, certainly would not be high density. Um, the township, or I'm sorry, the townhomes would also have entrances, individual entrances at grade into each unit, um, and would include attached two-car garages, so it would be consistent with that portion. Brick, stone, and fascia board are the proposed materials. Um, and the site is surrounded by, um, I-71 to the south, Five Seasons Sports Club to the north, and a similar townhome development to the west across Snyder Road and Sycamore Township. Therefore, staff found that it would be similar in character and have no negative impacts on these surrounding areas. So, staff found the development to be consistent with the, um, Sims Township land use plan. Um, the recommended motion to the Regional Planning Commission in the middle of the page was, um, made, seconded, and approved unanimously by the Regional Planning Commission at their meeting on October 6th. So we move forward with the analysis to thoroughfare plan consistency. There's more than enough right-of-way for Snyder Road, um, in compliance with the thoroughfare plan. Um, there were several sections of zoning compliance that were discussed, um, the most, immediate of which was the height. Because this is considered a transition area, because it's adjacent to residential zoning, even though there's no single-family directly abutting this, um, it is still considered to be a transition area and subject to the transition regulations, uh, one of which limits buildings to two stories or 30 feet in height. At the time the staff report was written, they were showing it all two-story from the front, three-story from the back, walkout buildings, which averages to a two-and-a-half story building. Since the staff report was written, um, revised elevations have been submitted. They still do have two-story from the front, three-story from the back buildings that would be two-and-a-half stories, um, but they have revised the buildings on the north side of the drive to be one-story from the front and three stories from the back, um, which averages out to, um, one-and-a-half stories. So, um, those buildings would not need a variance, but there are still two, uh, or four units, um, on the south side of the driveway that would need a variance to the height regulations, uh, to allow two-and-a-half stories and 35 feet in height. They, um, applicant did submit a lighting plan in compliance with the zoning resolution. Um, there is a sign, um, proposed along Snyder Road. There's not a detailed signage plan, though. Staff finds that one should be submitted as part of the final development plan if, um, the zone change is approved. Um, and then, the transition buffer yard requirements require 10-foot buffer yard and 10-foot street, 15-foot buffer yards and 10-foot streetscape buffers. Uh, they're proposing the streetscape buffer along Snyder Road in compliance with the plan. Staff is not suggesting that they tear out the existing vegetation to the north and the south to install the 15-foot buffer and rather suggests that, um, the existing vegetation be required to remain undisturbed, um, because it would provide a much better screen than, um, new landscaping if the old landscape, or if the old vegetation was ripped out. Those are the only issues that staff had. Staff recommended approval, recommends approval of the development, uh, with four conditions, one variance for the building height and one modification to allow the vegeta, the existing vegetation to count as the boundary buffer. The Regional Planning Commission did pass the motion on page five of the staff report unanimously, um, with these conditions, variance, and modifications as written by staff. So it's coming to you with, um, recommendation of approval from the Regional Planning Commission's staff, um, and a recommendation of approval from the Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission. If you have any answer, any questions?
Thank you, very good report. Do we have any questions for Mr. Snyder?
Of course we do. So, um, looking at the topographic map, uh, it looks like this is in a bit of a swell?
I think, I, I don't know if it's in a swell, I don't know, well, actually, I'll let the engineers here, you can describe the actual topography. There is a high point and a low point on the project. I think the high point is by 71 and the low point is on the property line between this property and north and, um, the Five Seasons Club. And I think it does also go down from Snyder Road into the site.
Right. So I'm just wondering, you know, bearing in mind the two-story requirement, is the topography sufficient to anticipate that even with three stories in the back, uh, that it would essentially from the, from Snyder Road, it would look like two stories?
I would, I would think so because of the, the gully and because of the existing vegetation that we're suggesting you require be maintained along that property line. If you go from one story in the front to three stories in the back, it's pretty steep.
Right.
So the lower level, lower, lower level of the, of the building would be, um, would be far below the elevation of Snyder Road, I would expect.
Okay. Yeah, ju- just for clarification, uh, I believe the applicant is proposing two-and-a-half story, is that correct?
The applicant has shown, um, two building elevations for various buildings. I believe the two six-unit buildings. Those are the elevations for one of the sets of buildings. That's the building that's still requires a variance. After the staff report was written, we received the revised elevations. I'm not sure if they made it into the packet that was mailed to you or not.
Can we see them?
Yeah, I do have a copy of them.
Mr. Snyder, we're just approving the zone change, or reviewing the zone change tonight, so they'll still have to come back for the final development plan for final elevations and all that, okay?
This is the other building that was submitted.
I, I just wanna make sure we all know what, what we're looking at regarding height, because height was an issue, um, in the previous discussions.
So the renderings that were in the packet, are these still, are they still proposing these or are these changing as well?
I believe that they are still proposing that elevation for at least the building on the south side, the four-unit building on the south side of the driveway, but the applicant is here and can answer that question definitively.
Do you have any more questions, or?
No.
You have a question, Todd?
Yeah, um, I don't understand your buffer yard requirement. Where, what area are you talking about, per se?
So the northern and southern property lines are the 71 property line and the, the property line with the Five Seasons Club.
Okay.
Both of which currently have existing vegetation along them. Um, the 15-foot, um, buffer yard is required to be the first 15 feet adjacent to the property line, and you're required to plant so many trees and shrubs in that area. To do that, if you've got a property line that's already vegetated, to do that, you have to take out the vegetation to plant the new vegetation. And so we're suggesting that they not be required to plant new vegetation, just remain, maintain the existing along both those property lines. They would still provide a 15-foot buffer, they just wouldn't be required to plant new trees and shrubs in that area. They would be required to maintain the existing vegetation.
So you're not suggesting changing what they propose?
No.
Don't overly modify based on landscaping?
I'm, I'm basically proposing that, um, and the staff report recommends that you require them to do what they say they're gonna do.
Understood. Thank you.
So, um, your recommendation is that they submit a detailed signage plan in, in compliance with the zoning resolution, um, as part of the final development plan?
Yes.
Uh, do, do we, are we concerned with any kind of size limitation there?
No, the zoning resolution allows, um, it's either 32 square feet or 50 square feet when they submit it, will, um, you know, as part of the final development plan, uh, presentation that I'll be making to, to you, uh, when it comes back, then we would discuss the details of the sign and whether they do or don't comply. Uh, we're not suggesting that you restrict it any further than what the zoning resolution already does.
Got it. And tonight, we're just given recommendation to the trustees.
Correct.
Brian, I, I do have another question. At one point, uh, uh, when we've discussed this property in the past, there was some kind of pathway or, or something over to Five Seasons, is that still anticipated?
Um, not as part of this plan, no. I don't know if it's anticipated, I should say they're not showing any connection as part of this plan.
Is there a sidewalk on Snyder there?
I believe that they're proposing one, yes. They're required to provide one.
They're required to provide one.
Is the maximum height of the proposed townhomes, how does that compare to Five Seasons?
The, the sidewalk is, is, is probably gonna come up as something, uh, to discuss as part of the final development plan, just because the, the topography here, um, where it leads up to the bridge and the lack of sidewalk on the bridge is concerning, but, um, I don't know if they have enough detail to, to discuss that tonight, or if that's something that would be better left to the final development plan where we get all the details. I'm sorry.
No, no. With respect to the height, um, how does the maximum height of the roof line of, of the proposed townhomes compare to Five Seasons and the townhomes on the west side of Snyder?
Probably pretty similar. Um, I'm not as familiar with the, um, the Five Seasons Club building, but I believe it's a fairly significant-sized building. Um, the townhomes across the street, I believe, are two stories with a gabled roof, um, which would make them two-and-a-half stories or 35 feet in height. Um, so probably pretty similar.
Thank you.
Is the restriction based on stories or height, or both?
Both.
How does the township define height? Is it midpoint of the pitch, or is it top of the top?
Midpoint of the pitch to a gabled roof, um, to the deck line, and then it's also an average height, not a maximum height.
Of the, of the grade, or?
Uh, average height of all four sides.
Gotcha.
It's the, it's the height of the building.
All right. If we have more questions, we'll ask you to come back, but.
No problem, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. Uh, so at this time, uh, I just wanna explain to the audience what we're doing here. So, uh, we're gonna ask the applicant to come up and, uh, talk about their project. Then we were gonna ask for the, uh, uh, audience to come forward if you are for the project, uh, then, yeah, come forward if you are, have, are neutral about the project, and then come forward if you are against the project. And I wanna let everybody know that when you come up here, please state your name and your address. Also, if you have any questions, you can address them to us, we will get you answers. I ask that nobody address the applicant directly. You look this way and you ask your questions. So with that, if we could have the applicant, please come forward, state your name and address, please.
Good evening, my name is Betsy Emmert. I am here on behalf of the applicant Snyder Investments. My address is 255 East Fitz Street, Suite 1900, 4520.
Thank you. So are you here to make any presentation, or are you?
I'm here just, um, on behalf of the Morleya Group, um, at Snyder Investments, to tell you a little bit about the project and why it is consistent, um, with the township's overall comprehensive plan and why we think it will be an asset to the community. Um, as you know, this is our second time here at Sims Township. We have revised the plan and I'm also here, um, with our engineer, Cardinal Engineering, um, to also answer any questions that you may have this evening. Um, as you may know from the excellent staff report given by Brian Snyder, uh, this is a first-class residential townhome development for a property that is otherwise very difficult to develop. Um, it's a triangular pad that's bounded by 71, uh, 71 North, as well as the Five Seasons and multifamily residential to the west. The property is currently zoned as A residence, and we're asking that the property be rezoned to DD, um, planned multifamily residential. We believe that the plans that we are sharing with you this evening demonstrate that the DD planned residence district will enable the applicant to, to provide a number of different types of amenities to, um, to the community. This will, this project will provoke development of an otherwise underutilized property. It will also broaden and diversify the tax base and enhance residential offerings for the residents of the township. We also believe that this project is consistent with the guiding land use and development principles contained in the master plan of the township, and that this project will overall enhance the community and attract young professionals, empty nesters, and residents who are looking for a new suburban living option, which we know is hard to find, um, particularly in this area. And we ask that, um, you consider the plans and the staff report, um, and are happy to answer any further questions that you may have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for the applicant at this point?
What was your reasoning for changing the elevation?
Um, I believe that our engineer would be the best person to, to answer that question, um, but the elevation, are you ma, are you making reference?
To this one?
To that one?
Yeah.
Based upon recommendations of staff, um, to be consistent with the requirements for the DD plan, um, district, I believe, but my engineer would be the better person to answer that question.
Okay.
Do you, you want the, uh? You want us to get the engineer up and?
Yeah.
Yes?
No, I'm good, I'm fine.
Okay.
I think it's a beautiful, uh, building. I'm confused by your definition of it as old-world charm.
Looks pretty modern.
Exactly.
I apologize, I don't recall using that term in my, uh, my recommendation, but we do think that the building materials that we're using are, are a mix with fascia board, brick, and stone, so, um, you know, we're trying to blend in as well as we can while also offering, um, an amenity that's attractive to both young professionals and people of different age demographics.
So what, do you know potentially what are the price points we're dealing with here?
I, I do not know, and I'm not certain, um, whether or not my client, um, has made that determination yet, but I would assume that it would be, um, you know, market rate and above, so.
And are these, uh, specifically only for sale, or are they for, uh, rent and for sale, or just for rent, or, or do you know that?
Again, I, I don't believe it's been determined, although, um, we don't believe whether or not they will be for sale, um, or rental, that it will impact, because it will be single-family, um, and it won't necessarily impact traffic, or, um, you know, density, it will still be single-family, 20 units. And it shouldn't impact traffic or, you know, otherwise parking, if that's a concern.
Well, I think the, the, uh, board is always curious in other, in regard that, are we, are we approving a potentially apartment building, or are we approving more of a, of a residential for, uh, for own, uh, product, not necessarily for rent product?
Again, I, I don't believe that it's been determined at this time whether or not these will be rental, or if they will be subject to, and, you know, an HOA, um, and will be for, for individual use. I just don't know at this time.
Okay.
There's been no discussions?
Uh, not with my client, no, just because these are still preliminary plans.
Interesting. Okay. Let me ask you this, then. The, uh, building in the back that is kind of what I'd call clubhouse, uh, for lack of a better term, does that have office locations in it for a rental agent, or?
I believe that there is an office that will be available for administration of, of the site, um, but I, otherwise, I believe it will be, um, just shared amenity.
Yeah. This one in the, like?
Oh, it's just that one? Is that?
Yeah.
Kind of at the end of the parking?
Yeah.
I can't, I can't see that.
I thought that was a trash collection.
That's what I thought.
I thought it was.
It's all, it should all be units. I think that maybe you're.
It is a dumpster.
I was gonna say, perhaps in a prior iteration, we did have back in April, um, a building that did have that administration building, but I do believe now that they all, there, there are just 20 units, two buildings that have the, um, six units, and then two buildings that have the four units.
Okay.
My apologies for the confusion.
I probably confused you.
It's really hard to read the small print.
Anybody else have any further questions for the applicant? Thank you, Betsy. Uh, we might ask you additional questions, but.
No problem.
Appreciate it. Anyone, uh, like to step forward and, um, uh, provide any kind of information related to if you are for this project? Anyone that has any neutral information or opinion, or comment? Anyone has any comment regarding against this project? Please come forward, state your name and address.
My name is Tim Jester, 8363 Hamiltonian Drive, um, 45249. I was on the fence of whether I was neutral or against it, so once you hear my questions, maybe that will clarify that.
Okay.
Um, my major question is, if you can't really state the price point, or whether they're condos, or apartments, or townhomes, I don't see how you could approve it. That would, to me, would be something as a property owner in, uh, the township who's considering my property values, that'd be a major concern of mine, and hopefully, it'd be a concern of yours. So, that's where I'm neutral. Uh, the reason I'm against it, uh, is because of student safety, the proximity to CHCA, um, and Sycamore. There's a lot of student drivers who, uh, go up and down Snyder Road, and they're not very good drivers. There's a lot of accidents that happen right there at the corner of Snyder and Kemper, uh, multiple accidents every year, especially at 3 o'clock when school gets out.
So, Tim, just so I'm clear, you live across the street from the project, is that where the?
No, I live on the same side. I am south.
Okay, so you're south.
So I'm off of.
But you're right off Snyder.
Hamiltonian is right off Snyder.
Yeah.
So, here's the proposal, here's the bridge.
Got it.
Huttenbauer Farms.
Got it.
And we're in Huttenbauer.
Got it.
Okay, the other reason, um, is, uh, there's also a blind spot, the whole road is basically a blind spot. Either way, you come over the bridge, or you come over the hill, people, I see we have, uh, the, um, I guess radar out there, and hopefully somebody's doing a study on, uh, on the speed there, that's what it looks like to me, you know, I might be wrong, but, you know, hopefully somebody will get some information on that, but cars go flying up and down.
What is the speed limit on that road, do you know?
35, I think.
All right.
I go 35.
We were in the police building earlier, okay, so they're not here.
Right. But for the record, I go 35. Also, uh, there is a lot of traffic and, um, there's, they use that Huttenbauer Farms for a cut-through when, uh, traffic, uh, stops there at Snyder and Kemper, so they're cutting through the neighborhood all the time, and every day, there's, there's lots of Amazon trucks going through there. The traffic increase since we've moved has just been, you know, incredible, and putting this, uh, development in there, I don't think that'll lessen traffic cutting through my neighborhood. Let's see. And the other question I had was also the number of parking spots in the development, too. You know, there's, what, 20 units, that could be, I don't know, two spots, four spots per unit, 40 cars, 80 cars? So, when you get to that question, you know, may you could let us know? So those are the reasons that I'm against it and or neutral to the project.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Can I tackle his use question?
I have had it.
So, the proposal in front of us is for 20 single-family townhome units. As a board, we can't approve something as a condominium or rental, because that's not the use. We're approving a single-family unit, and as a jurisdiction, we can't control if something is rented out or owned, because you could sell it to somebody and then they could rent it out. Um, we just need to look at the use. And so I think we have in front of us 20 attached single-family units in four different buildings, and so I think that's all that we can consider tonight, and then, you know, maybe at the next step, the applicant may have more information about the ownership.
Is there anyone else that is, uh, would like to comment that is against the project?
I'll just tag team, I guess.
Okay.
The other half, uh, the same address, Lisa Jester.
Please state your name, ma'am.
Lisa Jester, 10691, um, Hamiltonian. 8363, Hamiltonian, sorry. Um, and I was at the last public meeting, and I know the difficulty here is the plans continue to change, but we don't always see them. to change, but we don't always see them. The last public meeting, the attorney who was representing this group said that they were not townhomes, they were apartments. They couldn't manage the townhomes because those would all be individually owned. I also want to clarify that at that time, they said they weren't sure, but it was going to be two to, three to four bedrooms per townhome. And I don't know how you all think of density, but four people times two car, two garages times two parking pads gets up to 80 people pretty fast. So as I start to think about what this is really going to be, I don't know how you all make your decision, given that you have such a lack of clarity about what they're actually planning. And then I'd also just add, the homes across the street are individually owned townhomes. Two levels above grade, one below grade. So there are no places that I know of, and I'm not an expert, that they're all three levels above grade. And then take a look at your picture up there, and it's very interesting because what you're not seeing is our neighborhood. Our neighborhood is on the other side of 71. So if you look at the bottom corner of your picture, those are 300, 400, $500,000 homes that we all bought when that area was single family. And now, many of the folks who live against that highway will be looking across at apartments. High-density apartments, apartments where, not near term, but where we have up to, you know, four or eight people per unit with that many bedrooms. So this is really something else to think about as you consider what those of us who live in the community are looking for. And I'd say, step way back and please tell us what it is we're reviewing and approving because we don't know, again, townhomes, condos, how many bedrooms? But 20 units sounds good, so let's check the box. And I hope that you'll look a little bit deeper into it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. So if there's no other for, or against, rather, comments or questions, then I'm going to close the public hearing at this time. Okay, so do we have anybody that has any comments, questions up here? We got it? We're all good?
I'm okay, yeah.
So Brian, they're saying that there's four building pads. One of the building pads is going to be, by definition, two and a half stories.
I believe so, yes.
Are we in a position where we can say that one building pad or four units is two and a half stories and everything else is one and a half stories?
Yes, you can further restrict the variance language that was recommended. Yes, you can. You can make that variance specific to one building on the site plan.
And really, alls we're doing is, as stated, voting to recommend a zone change and it'll be brought back forth to us if it gets approved.
Yes, you're making a recommendation to the township trustees. If they approve the zone change, then the final development plan will have to come back for a public hearing with the zoning commission, yes.
Okay.
But to the extent that we approve it, or recommend it, I should say, with conditions and variances, the trustees can then change those accordingly?
Yes, they have the authority to make any changes they want to your recommendation, yes.
I assume we don't know what the maximum roof height is in, I don't know, feet above sea level versus the height of the barrier on 71? Are these going to be sticking up over that or are they going to be below?
I believe they're going to be above 71.
Okay. Including the sound barrier?
I believe so. I don't have any indication, I don't have any information on the sound barrier, though.
Yeah.
Is that presently there or is that forthcoming?
Present.
Looking at the property. So I guess if there, you know, you might say something about that.
I mean, but it's also sort of below ground.
Yes, I don't know what the, like, the grade of the highway is.
Brian, is there an existing sound barrier along 71 there?
I'm not aware.
Not in that location, it looks like, from Gate Street.
There you go.
I mean, I guess overall comments, just to my esteemed panel members.
Who would that be?
You have an area that's tough to develop. I mean, we've had issue or various things come before us in the past. I think we all recognize that the prior submission was a little intense and too dense for the area. This certainly addresses those concerns. At some point in time, you're going to have a development in this location. And from my standpoint, it's something that best serves the community, best serves the township. I like what they've proposed overall. One of the main concerns I have is shielding from the highway with respect to these developments as well as the neighbors, the gentleman that spoke earlier. So I mean, I know this isn't technically before us right now, we're just focusing on the zone change. But to whatever extent they can burn this up or put a sound barrier or landscaping, anything to allow the people, or this gentleman lives a little bit more screening so they don't see these, as well as, I'm sure the people that ultimately buy these don't want to necessarily look at highway.
And could we request some kind of views, like mock-up views of, like, from the highway looking at the property, just so that we could understand what you see above the trees? I think that would be helpful.
I think we would get that at the final development.
It wouldn't be required, I don't think.
It would not be required as part of the final development plan?
I mean, the elevations, but not like a 3D mock-up of?
Right, that's what I was talking about. That's not something that we require.
Can we request it, though?
You can. I mean, if they remember that you requested it here, they can provide it voluntarily. I mean, you have the authority to either continue tonight's hearing or the final development plan hearing to get more information.
No, I think, I mean, at the next stage, getting that information.
Yeah. Right. And if you don't get it, you can continue the hearing until you do.
Okay, gotcha.
So my comments are, I view this as a lot better than what was previously proposed. I believe that 20 units is a lot better than 80. I believe that 2,800 square feet is a very good size townhome or condominium or whatever legal description you're going to use here when you develop it. I also know that at 2,800 square feet, these are not going to be cheap products, not in today's world. So the comment about the dollar amount in the surrounding area, I'm sympathetic to that, but these things have to be 400-plus, given the size that we're dealing with here. And they could easily go to 700,000. I know a little bit about this, I'm kind of in the business. So as far as the traffic, we don't require traffic impact studies, especially for something this size. The comments from the audience, you're correct, at 20 homes, it could be as many as 80 cars potentially. I kind of doubt it, but you are correct. That could happen. But going from what we were down to where we are now, I do believe the applicant is headed in the right direction. I think the proof will be in the pudding in the final development plan that will be back before us, I believe. At that point, we do want to hear from the applicant more information. We want to see what you look like renderings-wise and address some of the comments that you've heard here. And although we cannot determine whether or not it's for rent or not, I think the, I think the direction here is we're not looking to approve an apartment building. So we'd like to kind of hear maybe what your REA is and homeowners association is looking at. We'd like to know about that, too. So those are my comments. With that, if there's no more comments or questions, anyone like to?
Just one question to Brian.
Sure.
And this is, is it case 2022-04 or 01? On this sheet, it says 04, and then on this sheet, it says 01.
It's 04.
Okay. Just want to make sure we don't.
Anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. This is a motion in regard to Sims Case 2022-04 Snyder Road Townhomes to approve a zoning amendment from A Residence to DD Plan Multi, multiple Residences, subject to all the standards for the planned district and with the specific conditions that the site shall contain maximum of 20 attached single-family townhomes, that the lighting plan and signage plan come back to us as part of the final development plan, that the landscaping plan complies with the zoning resolution, and that we have a variance that allows the building on the site to have a maximum of two and a half stories or 35 feet, where a maximum of two stories or 30 feet is previously permitted. And that we make a modification that the site shall provide a 15-foot undisturbed area where no vegetation may be removed along the southeastern, northern property lines where a 15-foot boundary buffer is required. And to install a boundary buffer would be unnecessary and/or undesirable.
Second?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Just a clarification, are you saying that all the units, all the buildings would be two and a half story, 35 feet?
I think since we are just looking at the revision to the townhomes and that's going to come back to us, that means from A to Double D, and it's going to come back to us for a final authorization, you know, why stipulate that at this point?
You know? So yes, all the buildings to an amenity?
Yeah.
To answer your question, but did you, Liz, did you want to limit those buildings?
No, I think giving them some flexibility at this point before they've, you know, finalized their designs, I think is fair.
Okay.
So I don't have an issue with that.
Okay. Before we vote, any more comments or questions on this motion before us? Please call the roll.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Reichman?
Yes.
Mr. Ender?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, let's open the public hearing back up for case Sims, number 79-03 Governor's Hill Apartments. May we hear from the illustrious Brian Snyder? Is your voice going to hold out for this one?
I hear you. Brian Snyder, County Development Services Administrator. Again, I prepared a report that you should have a copy of in front of you for this case. This is a final development plan modification for the conversion of one of the Governor's Hill office buildings into an apartment building. This would be the building closest to 71 to the right as you're looking at the two twin buildings in the back of the development. This building is J and K, I believe, as they were approved in the original development plan with a parking garage in between them. They were built as twin L-shaped office buildings, approved in the 1980s by the Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission. So long ago that the county zoning commission didn't even have control of final development plans at the time that these were approved, which then went to the zoning, the Rural Zoning Commission, and now is in the jurisdiction of the Sims Township Zoning Commission. You have a long list of previous actions on the front page, I won't go into those. Excuse me. This was an approval, obviously, for an apartment building. The applicant is proposing to convert Building J into a 205-unit apartment building. They're proposing to make significant changes to the elevations, to the facades of the building, not actually changing the footprint or the height, just reusing the building that's currently there with new facades. They are proposing to construct a significant amount of amenities on the property, a large portion of which are in the front of the building. That parking lot to the front of the building would be regraded. They would add landscape islands, a dumpster enclosure, six enclosed parking garages would be constructed in the parking lot. Ball courts, pools, and fitness center buildings would also be constructed in the kind of northeast corner of the site. And to the rear of the building would be a couple of warming pools. There's an existing basketball court back there and a kind of a lunch area for the office building. They're proposing retaining the basketball court as a basketball court, enhancing some of the, some of the other paved areas with, I believe, wildflower field, two warming pools, seating areas, a timber bar, replanted landscape beds, a cooking area, and fire pits, all of which you can see on what they're calling page L1 of 8 or page 4 of 12, depending on where you look on the title. This kind of page, it's not, I don't think your copy is colored, but it's the one that shows the whole site. Does show landscaping, amenities, pretty much everything on one sheet. So staff reviewed this for consistency, as we always do with final development plan modifications, for consistency with the original resolution of approval. The conditions that were approved in Board of County Commissioners Resolution 613 cannot be changed by the zoning commission, they can only be changed at this point by the township trustees, the legislative authorities. And we reviewed this for consistency with those. There are no issues with consistency with the original conditions of approval. There were 18 conditions on this project at the beginning. It was for a much larger site at that time. It included all of Governor's Way, all the way from Mason to 71, and then to these buildings to the south and the Mason exit to the north. There are only two issues that we raised, I'm sorry, there are four issues that we raised as far as zoning compliance. The first of those is the intensity of the use. So this district allows for 10 units to the acre. The O Residence and the OO Residence districts allow multifamily residential uses as one of the two primary uses in this district. So it's not a question of whether multifamily is allowed in the O District because it's the primary, one of the two primary uses allowed in the O District. So the density, though, that's permitted in the O District is 10 units to the acre. 205 units on this 10.9-acre lot comes out at a density of 18.85 units to the acre. So they would need a variance to the maximum density. There is no issue with this, with granting a variance as far as it being a use variance or any other type of, you know, variance that we would strongly encourage you not to do. There's no other district that they can ask for. If this was in a district that had a lower density and there was a higher density district that they could change it to, we would suggest that they go through that zone change. In this case, 10 units to the acre is the maximum permitted anywhere on any district in Sims Township. So there's not another district that they can ask for, they're not circumventing a zone change. So there's no, we're not, we don't have an issue with you considering a variance to it. It's up to you, obviously, as to whether or not the variance is warranted. In your minds, there's a front yard setback and side yard setback issue with some of the amenities in the front. The pickleball courts are less than 40 feet from the front property line, and one of the parking garages is less than 15 feet from the side property line. In this case, these property lines are kind of running through the middle of driveways and parking lots. So I don't know that you'd be able to notice that they were granted any kind of variance to be closer than they're permitted to be, looking at it if they were constructed in the places shown. But they do technically need those two variances. Outdoor lighting, they did not submit a lighting plan saying that they're going to reuse the existing lighting and install new Ballard, new Ballard lighting. But we don't have a detailed lighting plan. So we would suggest that one of those be submitted that demonstrates compliance with the zoning resolution. And then the transition buffer yard requirements, they are required to provide a buffer along I-71 to the west, northwest. Staff recommends that they do provide that buffer. Other than that, they did submit a parking analysis, they have more than enough parking spaces for the required one and a half units, or I'm sorry, one and a half spaces per apartment in this development. They're in excess of two and a half per, which would exceed the requirement, even if these were all two-bedroom apartments, which would require two per apartment. They have 500 and some parking spaces identified. They have 500 and some parking spaces identified, both in the garage and in the remaining areas of the parking lot and in the garages that they're constructing, um, so compliance with the parking regulations is not an issue. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
My understanding is a, uh, two-story parking garage probably there between the two buildings?
Yes.
Is there any proposal for that that stays there throughout this?
There, I believe they're entitled to use half of that garage for parking and they're showing that in part, as part of their parking calculations. The reason that your package is so thick that most of that are the easements, I, I'm not going to pretend that I read through all of those, um, easements are not something that we regulate through zoning, but they, I believe, submitted them to demonstrate their ability to both get in and out of this property and use that garage. But they've included half of the garage in their parking calculations, so I believe that's what their intent is.
So, uh, we'll, uh, because I, I do want to ask the applicant, because I did look at the declaration and the declaration, unless it's been modified, uh, does not allow residential use, so we'll have to talk to the applicant about that, so.
Did the plans, um, provide information on the unit sizes or like the mix of unit types within the building?
I believe they said that they were all be, all going to be one and a half unit or one, I'm sorry, one bedroom or two bedroom units, because they require one of, they, their parking analysis said one and a half parking spaces was required per unit, um, and they do have a floor plan, they've got, um, several sheet, sheets of floor plans that were submitted.
Okay. There's a lot of pages to get through.
I mean, the typical floor plan is on, is on a lot of their sheets. I don't know that we have the floor plans for all five stories.
You saw a floor plan?
No, that's, that was the previous floor plan.
I believe that they submitted all the floor plans for all five floors, I think that we, um, as staff suggested they not give us all those sheets, because, um, we can't regulate, other than the number of units, what actually happens inside the building, exactly where they go, like, we can't put a minimum square foot area on it, we can't tell them, you know, where the units have to be in relation to each other, it's, they're asking for 205 units in the building. Typical floor plan is all we require.
Because this is abiding 71, is there any ODOT or other kind of considerations that...
I don't believe so, they're not proposing anything that would impact traffic, it's basically what's there, it's just a different use.
Okay.
Do we know the vacancy around that shopping, that office area?
For vacancy for office?
For office, yeah.
I do not know.
I don't know if the applicant does, I can wait.
I mean, that was one of the reasons that they cited in their letters, why they wanted to convert this, because there is a vacancy rate, but...
Yeah, obviously, office is a huge, you know, issue right now and, um, I know we do work with Springdale and they have a office building being converted to multifamily with townhomes in the parking lot, and they're already seeing a return in office interest by providing a residential option around, um, the office uses, so, I mean, I think it's something that could help spur this area to, you know, be more enticing for people to, you know, occupy the unit, the office uses, um, the office buildings there. But, again, I don't know how successful those office buildings are right now.
Any other question of Mr. Snyder? All right. Thank you. So, uh, before we bring the applicant up here, again, once again, uh, we're going to do the same procedures we did the previous, uh, case, uh, we will hear from the applicant, we will then hear from anybody who is for the proposed, um, uh, zone change, we'll hear anybody with neutral information or comments, and then anybody that's against, uh, the zone change. So if we could now hear from the applicant? Please state your name, sir, and your address.
Good evening, my name is Dobbs Ackerman, my address is 5801 Madison Road, 45202. And may I approach to pass out?
Sure.
That may be handy in the discussion.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
You have enough?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for having us here this evening to talk about Governor's Hill. If we could really, I'd like, if I may, just to spend a minute or two about our company and what we do in regards to these types of projects and why we're here this evening and what attracted us to Governor's Hill, why we believe this is such a good opportunity for the marketplace and how it enhances the overall environment. Our company, Ackerman Group, it's about an 84-year-old company, we've been involved in everything from construction, land development, property management, institutional-grade investments. Over the last 10 years, we've developed, owned and operated over 7,000 units. One of the things that we have found is that there is becoming a need in the environment to look at existing product types like office and look at conversion of those product types under a mission of revitalization. You asked about what's happening in the vacancy of the office market today. The sub-market right now, Cincinnati North, is over 20% and growing. So, while we've seen those numbers in the past, what we haven't seen in the past is the dynamic of a change in the environment of work from home and a new work relationship that... A work relationship that, uh, employees have with their employers and the way employers are looking at their office spaces. And so, we're seeing a pretty big shift in the marketplace that we think is going to continue for the long term. Because of that, we're looking for revitalization opportunities and we're looking for the right revitalization opportunities. This building that is in Governor's Hill, 8600, happens to be a very unique building. It's unique because of its footprint, it has a very thin footprint. Most buildings don't apply to conversions, most buildings will have to stay office because they're too wide and you can't put an apartment or a condominium unit in a building like that because it's too deep and you can't get the light all the way back into the unit. This is a very unique building because it's so thin, it's only, I think about 80, a little less than 80 feet wide. And so you're able to put units in, still provide the light that you're looking for in the unit, create an appropriate unit design and, um, have it work effectively. You asked about the, um, the types of units that are going in here, uh, these are all one bedrooms and studios, 55% of the units are studios. And that is basically because we found this building, we understood what was happening in the marketplace, and we saw an opportunity to take a unit type that we've already had, used in the past, and put it in this type of building in a location where we see a sub-market that, yes, we do think it's going to come back, but we think it's going to take some revitalization overall between office and retail locations in the overall marketplace, but a continual stimulus of that will be important. It is our mission to make a positive impact in our Cincinnati region. If we could just go quickly to page five, um, we are very, very purposeful about these projects, and so we are purposeful at the, uh, you have to start with the end, and the end is what are we doing? And what we're doing is we're creating community. How do we do that? We have five pillars of operations, our place is social, furry friends is pets, live well is health, for the goodness charity. These are the foundations that we operate every day at every one of our properties, and this is how we change the environment of communal living. And it makes a real difference when you say, hey, is an apartment community coming to your community? Apartment communities are needed, the right apartment communities are needed, the white, the, the communities that are operated the right way are needed. We've had a very successful career of doing this over a very long time. We do that with a company behind us, our company stands under guiding principles every day for making quality personal, having fun, always doing the right thing, being part of a team and living with personal power. That's the basis that we start with before we even start thinking about a project. The next, um, slide here is the orientation of, uh, the building in red, in red is, um, 8600, so I just wanted to give everyone, make sure they knew where this was. It's sitting all the way in the back of Governor's Hill along 71 with a pretty heavy woods line and then a pretty deep gully behind it, and then a parking garage that sits between it and then, we call it the FIS building, um, next door, which is really a mirror to this building. Currently, uh, the building has just a few tenants in it, a lot of Governor's Hill, um, has a fair amount of vacancy right now, um, even though those, the, the building has some tenants in it, um, it is not well occupied, and if you go there during the day, you may see 20 cars, um, it's expected to have 900 cars there each day. And so there's just a lot of, um, vacancy in the building, but then even if the space is leased, they're not using it, and they've decided to go to remote work. From here, I'd like to bring, um, my coworker Brian Henning up and go through the, the plans themselves, and then I can come back and go through a little bit around the goals that had been established for this project, why they were established, and then I can also answer any questions for you.
Hi, everyone, uh, my name is Brian Henning, Development Manager with the Ackerman Group. Uh, my address is 24, or 2104 Kemper Lane, uh, 45206. Um, starting off, uh, on the north and east building face, it's kind of the pretty render. Um, essentially, this is, yeah, the northeast corner of that building, it's, uh, the corner that you see as you drive down Governor's Hill Drive. A little bit about what we plan to do with the building, uh, we're going to remove all the glass, um, and then in certain sections, bring back, uh, the wall to create residential balconies, and then go back with new, uh, windows, new walls. The precast, uh, concrete panels will remain and, uh, they'll get painted, uh, some color yet to be determined. And then obviously, we'll kind of soften this, this facade up with vegetation. The idea is, uh, you know, it's kind of a, a big design challenge, we're taking a office building in a very large office complex, and we're trying to create kind of a residential environment, a place where people kind of want to live, want to hang out. Um, and so kind of, the balcony design is, is one way, we're, we're trying to, um, make that happen. Uh, on the next page, the landscape site design, um, this gives kind of a good overview of the overall site, so you can see, uh, the building with the units in, uh, in lay, and then to the right, that faint rectangle is the parking garage that you discussed. Uh, our plan is to keep that as is, um, ensure it's structurally sound and it's, uh, you know, good for the long term, but we plan to utilize that along with the 8500 Governor's Hill building. Um, out, up front, uh, we, uh, as Brian, um, mentioned, we plan to create kind of an active amenity area, uh, along with some garages and, uh, enhanced landscaping. The idea here is, uh, once again, just to try and create a buffer between kind of the residential area and the overall office area. And then in the rear, uh, is another amenity area that's seen more as kind of a lounge space, a little quieter, a little more subdued. But yeah, we'll, uh, jump into, uh, kind of more detail, if you mind hitting, uh, the next slide, there we are. So yeah, this kind of just lays out some of the landscaping details. Uh, once again, you know, we want to enhance the landscaping along the building just to help soften the facade as well as, uh, provide some privacy to those first-floor units, um, so they aren't kind of staring at a, a parking lot. Then, uh, next slide, please. So this is the rear, um, as you can see, we've got kind of two warming pools, number of different, uh, gathering spots, uh, once again, the idea is kind of dissipate the activity across multiple areas. We're keeping the woods line intact, um, just to help dissipate sound, we've also placed, um, the amenity building kind of between the, uh, residences, um, on the rear property line and kind of the amenity space, once again, just to, um, help dissipate any sound that might occur. Um, and then we're also putting in, um, kind of a wildflower garden, and once again, it's kind of just to, um, disincentivize people from hanging out in that space and really try and push them up against the building more, if that makes sense. Um, and yeah, if you don't mind going, perfect, awesome, you, or you can foresee what I'm saying. Um, so this is the, the front amenity spot, this is, uh, seen as a much more active area, we got pickleball courts, lap pools, um, and then a workout, uh, facility as well, um, along with kind of garages and, and enhanced landscaping. Next page, the grading plan, we're not doing a whole lot of regrading, it's, we're really trying to keep what is existing, um, you know, with the, uh, amenity space in the front and the back, some regrading will have to happen, uh, in order to get those kind of level, um, and, and kind of, uh, in their proper position, so. And then, yes, perfect, so floor one and two, this might be hard to read for you guys. So, uh, we are actually, we're using, um, an existing, uh, unit plans or unit plans that we have, uh, used on other projects, they've been modified slightly just to fit this floor plan, uh, but we feel kind of very comfortable that they kind of deliver the livability that we're, we're looking for. On the first floor, we'll have another kind of amenity space right on the interior corner, um, along with kind of leasing offices, um, maintenance offices, bike storage, um, places for mail and trash and all that, uh, kind of nuts and bolts stuff. And then finally, yeah, floor three and four, um, not as much to say here, all these units will kind of stack to kind of create those efficiencies, uh, that we look for, um, when, uh, looking at these projects. And then on the fourth floor, we'll actually have a rooftop, uh, deck or patio, um, kind of seen as another amenity space for the residents. And yeah, I don't know if you guys have any questions about the plans?
So, Brian, um, am I to understand, so, you have these warming pools? That are more towards the rear of the building, is that correct?
Yes, yeah, they're behind the building.
So, so these warming pool, pools are to be kind of utilized, right? I mean?
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
Almost like a large hot tub, sort of like a place to hang out.
Do you expect to have any kind of, uh, outdoor stereo system, music, that type of thing?
Uh, no.
With these?
No, we, we do not.
Okay. Because, but, the concern is, is that's the side that's abiding the residential?
Yeah, yeah.
And we just kind of want to make sure we're respectful of those folks in the back?
Yeah, I, I can totally understand that concern, we have not had any discussions about putting any sort of outdoor stereo systems out there.
And I also want to, uh, warming pools is the right word, not hot tub, because we, we've had a lot of experience with hot tubs and we don't like hot tubs, so, we do warming pools, which basically keeps it so that you can use them later into the season, uh, the dead of winter, you can't use them. Hot tubs seem to attract a lot of activity at nighttime that just don't always go great, and so, for operations, and so, we've really gone to a warming pool approach and it just, it, it extends the ability for people to use them in the right way, table, and, and for us to manage them also in a little better way.
Okay. That answers my question, thank you. And then, just, this is not a hard, I'm just curious, uh, do you have a projected rent per square foot here? It just kind of gives me an idea of kind of what, what you're going for as far as your clientele?
So the average right now that we're looking at is about, uh, 1,600 plus for a unit would be, that would be a base rent, and then of And then, of course, on top of that, we do provide usually just about all services, sometimes even electric, and that will add about 200-plus dollars a month to your rent. So that'd be cable, trash, water, sometimes electric, internet, of course. And so ultimately, it ends up being about 1,800 plus on average. The studios are a little bit less, the one bedrooms are a little bit more.
Okay.
Do you have any renderings or elevations with respect to the six parking garages that you mentioned?
We do not. We have, we have not done renderings on those garage buildings.
Total number of cars that will be parked in those?
Um, we-
Six, each, for each garage, six cars.
So 36.
Yep.
So those are in addition to the garage, right? So do you, what do you, you charge that? It's like if somebody says, I want to, I want to actually have a garage where the car is inside and nobody could do it. I mean, is that the concept? Is that what you're doing?
That is right. You would have a private, secure garage. Now, people do, they, this is very attractive to have a parking garage on site because to be able to have your car undercover in a parking garage is fantastic. And so we like the use that it has a parking garage. The garage is in good condition. It has some minor cleanup that has to occur to it, but it is in good condition. And then we would have these private garages that you could rent separately.
So, and I'm familiar with your product. You do a nice job, so.
Thanks.
But I do have to ask you about this because it is germane to your development, and it's germane to our decision in a way. And that is, I don't know if you've had a chance to read the declaration, which governs your easements?
Yes.
With respect to, I would assume, your neighbor?
FIS, yes.
I don't know. If you can address what I read on page 10, there is specific restrictions that restrict any residential dwellings other than a motel, hotel, or educational facilities unless specifically approved in writing by the developer. So I don't know where you are with that, but that's kind of germane to what we're looking at here, right? Because if you're prohibited from doing what you're doing here, then why are we here, right? To a certain extent.
Well, I have to, I was not, what you're referring to and that, I, I don't know if that applies to us at this date.
Well, this is your declaration between, I'll have to look it up here, but it's this voluminous document that was given to me by our crack staff, so I-
We are aware of a-
I just happened to pay attention and look at things like this because I'm in the development business, so.
Yeah.
And so, I'll tell you what, this is between, and staff probably has it, I would guess, too, right?
Yeah, I was just getting ready to look at it. The definition of developer. Top of my mind.
I'm trying to see who the parties are here.
They're the developers, top of my mind.
So this document is between town properties as owner, seller, and Governor's Hill developers. So, and it runs via land, the way I see it.
They are no longer involved.
Well, it's part of your title report, so I just-
Yeah. We, through our-
I'm not trying to stonewall you here.
Not at all, not at all.
I'm just saying-
Through our legal review of this with-
Because, excuse me, because the reason why is because part of this is, from a parking perspective, you have to have access to this garage.
True.
And if you're in, not in compliance with this document, then you don't, you can't access the garage to a certain extent, right? I mean, you can't even do what you're supposed to be doing. It's a violation. And so we just, I'm protecting, I'm protecting the community is what, what I'm raising this issue, is what I'm doing, so.
Yeah. Through our legal review, we have, that has not been identified as an obstacle to us. And so this, your comments would be, new information is an obstacle based on who a developer would be currently running with the property.
Okay.
So we did, we did not identify that as an issue.
Okay. All right.
I did want to bring out that, thanks. I did want to bring out that, as I mentioned before, we do start with the end in mind. We begin to look at community goals. In this case, looking at the context and the aesthetics of the area and what we're trying to delever, deliver. We also look at the, with that also, the market and rising, the delivery of amenities in the site, really trying to bring something stronger to the market in what we're delivering. And so how do we do that? We go through all of the things that we've had success with in the past on the exterior, if it's pools and fitness centers, walking paths, gardens and pet parks, or if it's on the interior. And one of the reasons that we have put the design together that we have is the unit type that we're providing has been extremely successful in the marketplace. That's not only the design, but that's also the finishes. So we've now gone to a level of working on every finish type within the unit, germ-free surfaces, health and wellness functionality, where light comes into a unit, how that works when you're in the unit. I mention these things because it's all part of understanding if this will be successful in the long run for the community, and that is a benefit to the community, which we believe it is, and our projects in the past have shown that to become a positive impact. We've provided some imagery of some projects that we've done in the past. We also, at the same time, think about the overall building and its elements. We create our own program standards for ourselves so that we define what makes a good building. We've included that in your packet for you in regards to the program standards, the philosophy behind it, central planning elements. We do that inside and outside of the building, sustainability of materials. We go down the list to lighting systems. We are really, our intent was to just comply with the existing zoning requirements for lighting, the lighting equipment there, its placement and its light levels are good. Some of the fixtures are old, and so our intent was really just to replace them, not to change anything we were doing from a light level perspective. Same thing with building signage. We're very aware of impact that signage can have on buildings, to not change what's there or go above where it is today. Same thing on landscaping. We get professionals involved in regards to the sustainability. In this case, we, our landscape architect spent time with us on site to make sure that we also were enhancing from Governor's Hill perspective what was already there and really creating an impact when you came towards the residential and separating itself from the office while still maintaining an appropriate condition and enhancement for the overall development. Our opportunities and benefits that on a project like this are creating lifestyle and encouraging people to want to live in the township, creating the right aesthetics, and ultimately for us, it's creating community. That is what we're about. Our tagline is building community together. We mean it. We work on it every day. We have 115 people in our company today, and that's all they do, is trying to figure out how are we going to make a positive impact. And so we have a portfolio of some of our developments in the back for you guys to just see what we've been involved with on some of our more recent developments. But we are, we would be very excited to do a project here in the township and we believe deliver a, a unique opportunity for a reuse of a building. And maybe with that also, the start of some stability in the marketplace for office and some rejuvenization as we see some times ahead that might be a little bit more challenging than they have been in the past. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Doug. Nice presentation.
Thanks.
Do we have any questions for the applicant? So at this point, I'd like to open up to the public. Anyone who is, have an opinion or a question or a comment that is for the project, anyone who is for the project, anyone who has neutral comments or questions or opinions, please state your name, sir, and your address.
My name's Chris Jones. I'm at 8924 Cypress Point Lane, which is the Montgomery Trace subdivision directly across from Governor's Hill there on Chapel Square. So, you know, first of all, love the development. I mean, that is, you know, so we've been there for 21 years and know the office complex really well. Frankly, probably walked past the buildings and the garage every day of COVID for, you know, a year plus, and so know it well, and again, being there 21 years. All the traffic patterns. And so I've just got more, a couple process questions. This is kind of being my first time at the, you know, at the zoning, you know, meetings. And then probably a couple questions with regards to the specific development as it relates really more to traffic. And so let me just kind of start there. So I think as everybody that has, you know, been around here for some time, you know, the office vacancy has been, you know, way down there for roughly 10 years. You know, before 10 years, again, we moved in in '01. I'd say from '01 to, you know, 2010, probably the, you know, the recession, you know, back during that day, you know, those office buildings, you know, lots of traffic in and out, and we did in our neighborhood in particular have a lot of cut-through traffic. You know, it was, you know, fairly significant, you know, over the past five to 10 years because of the low vacancy over there in the office complex. We have not had, you know, very much, you know, kind of cut-through. So, you know, that would be, you know, one thing I would ask from, you know, a question then is, on, you know, a development like this, is there, you know, a traffic study that is actually performed as part of it? And then kind of a second question, I'll let you answer that, is I do think that this is going to be a winner, and I can also then foresee the second building that's right there on the other side of the garage going towards that development. So another, you know, set of population kind of being there, which means obviously more traffic in, you know, in and out, and obviously it's, it would be a different pattern if it's apartments, you know, the daily traffic when it's all apartment or all office, you know, a different set of issues versus if there's more traffic on the evenings and weekends, again, kind of coming through the neighborhoods. So I guess the question is, yeah, traffic study.
So I don't believe, and staff can help me, that we request a traffic impact study on this.
No, we don't require one if it were approved. When they go through the building permit process and the county engineer feels like they need to do a traffic study, the county engineer will require a traffic study.
Yeah, okay. It's really out of our purview. I mean, we don't get involved in roads.
And I would just further make the comment, I think, what's the size of the structured parking?
Yes.
900 cars or something?
I believe so, yeah.
So, and I think they plan to use approximately 400 of, or half of it maybe?
I think they have 900 spaces available for just this building, and they're proposing to maintain 500 and some.
So-
Oh, there's plenty of parking, yeah. That's not-
Yeah, well, I guess the point is, is, so the question is, and you're right, a TIS would determine this, especially trips, but the, you know, just, let's go with anecdotally, okay, we're probably dealing with less traffic than if it were two full office buildings, when they're really full and humming, and so to that extent, it's probably a lesser intense use than it would be if they were a full office building in some regard, so.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And then kind of to the process system, is this the, you know, I try to catch all the newsletters that are emailed out is, you know, how I became aware of, you know, of this meeting, but is this the first meeting of the, for the zoning on this particular building?
So-
No, this, this is different. The first case was a zone change where there were multiple meetings. The zoning on this property has already been approved, and this is the permitted use. So this is the, this is the final meeting, or it could be the final meeting. This commission has the final decision whether or not the modification to the approved final development plan should be approved or not.
Got it. And then kicks to the trustees for the-
No, no.
No, this is-
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And then they would have to go through all their building permit and engineering reviews and all of that with the county.
Okay. Well, like I said, you know, love, love the development. You know, I think the question you raised is obviously going to be critical to this, and I guess what I also ask that one is like, who then, from a legal standpoint, makes that determination?
Uh, I mean, I have to punt that to staff, but I would assume that before any COs are provided, I would guess Hamilton County might, might look at a document like that and ask the question, and the applicant would probably have to have an answer at that time, so.
We know, we would not, we won't get into the private easement agreement issues between the property owner and the, the two adjacent property owners. That's going to be up to the adjacent property owner to handle himself. It's between two property owners. We don't get in between them as the government.
So there. I stand corrected.
And then also just a curious question, who actually owns then the parking garage that's there now between the buildings?
I'll have to ask the applicant that specific question.
Okay.
I'm going to assume that they probably own it jointly, and there's this, because what I was reading was a, in effect, a shared agreement, okay, so that they, they maintain it together, et cetera, et cetera. Not only that, but maybe some of the common drives.
Yeah.
So, so between them and the current office building, those are the owners.
All right. Well, thanks for answering the questions. Again, love it, and, you know, definitely, I think it's going to be a winner for the township, for sure.
Thank you for your comments.
Yeah, thanks.
So anybody else with any neutral information or anybody that is against the project, either way?
Neutral.
You can say whatever you want, but please state your name.
8362 Hamiltonian. I appreciate the interest in the revitalization project. It seemed very tasteful and not anti-development, but I do have one question, and hopefully between you or the applicant, somebody can answer this.
Okay.
So I'm not really sure how this works, but do apartments, how do they affect the school system? Are they a drain on school systems? You know, comparing it to like an empty office building where nobody's paying, I would think, anything as opposed to an apartment, but I've always heard that apartments can be a drain on, you know, taxes to the school system. So if anybody could address that as a Sycamore grad and a resident in Sycamore, if you could let me know your opinions on that, whether apartments are a drain on, on the school system or, or if they actually pay enough taxes to cover their, their place.
Well, that's, that's a tough question to answer, frankly. And it's because they do pay quite a bit of taxes, but they, if, if every apartment dweller had two children, it would be specifically a drain, probably to answer it in that regard. The issue is, is, and that's why I was asking about the rental rate, and because the rental rate is, and the size of the unit, is at a level where, again, this is anecdotally because I want to be careful what I say here and tell you, but this, and this is my opinion, but the level of which they're charging is only going to attract a certain type of renter. And if somebody had three children and wanted to get in the school system, they'd have a tough time, I mean, I guess you could theoretically, but they'd have a tough time trying to rent a, you know, a thousand-square-foot studio apartment with three children versus they could probably rent a house somewhere in the community for about the same price tag. So the reality of it is, is they're- So the reality of it is, is they're probably not going to be here anyway. So what happens then is, is you get what you call renters by choice, which are people that don't necessarily, they rent this, but it's not because they have to rent, but they kind of want to rent. And then you get young professionals that kind of want to be out in the area and want to be in a communal type setting like this. And so the reality of it is, is there's very few kids that are part of this. And it then becomes a positive for the schools in the long run.
Okay. Yeah, I appreciate the applicant's price point and what kind of a development he was proposing too.
Thank you for your comments and questions. Anybody else? Okay, I will now close the public hearing at this point, and any questions, comments from our board?
Am I understanding correctly, the issue with the declaration essentially is we don't have a dog in the fight?
That's correct.
The.
So, so what I read, my research means nothing at this juncture, so.
Yeah, maybe next time we don't need this.
Yeah.
Save some trees.
I love the concept, especially of business residential law, but like others' opinions with respect to the whole density issue that we're encountering a number that we've never seen before or is currently allowable, and you go from 10 to 18, almost 19 is significant. Do you just allow a variance based on the unique circumstances being proposed, or is that a concern for you going forward with other projects?
I mean, I see it as a unique development because they're revitalizing an existing building, and, you know, there may be other buildings come forward, but that want a similar variance, but I think because it's an existing building, I, I don't really have an issue with it, and I think the unit types are purposeful. It sounds like the size and the, you know, that quantity based on the tenant that they're trying to attract. If we wanted a lesser density, they would have to make the units bigger, and I don't know if that would cause other issues. I don't know. I don't know if they'd even want to do that.
Brian, is this going to be the largest apartment building?
The largest apartment building?
In Sims Township?
Yeah.
By size or by number of units?
Yeah.
Yes. Probably. Yeah.
It'd probably be the tallest.
Yeah.
It's definitely not the, it's definitely not the most units in an apartment development in Sims Township, though. I'm guessing there are more in Wellington and in Harper's Point, both.
Yeah, this is.
And they had, did, did those comply with the density requirements, or did they have variances?
No, neither of them did. Harper's Point had a specific variance that they could refinance their apartment complex. The previous density requirement for Hamilton County was 14 units to the acre, so they were both developed under county zoning. That density was reduced in 1996 when Sims Township adopted zoning.
Okay.
So I believe they're both 14 units to the acre.
I agree with Liz. This is a unique property in the fact that it's a former office building, it's in an area that has a lot of commercial around it, except for maybe the people in the, in the back, which is behind the woods, that type of thing. And so it actually lends itself for something along the lines that this does, and it just turns out, it's just kind of how it works out, is that it's got plenty of parking associated with it, and, and therefore, I, I don't have a problem with 200 units in that specific area of the township.
Right. Do you have a development timeline? I mean, in terms of, yeah, you can.
Yeah, please step forward, Dobbs.
We would, we would be scheduled to close on the building in January of '23, and then all tenant, all remaining tenants would vacate by July. We believe that would come ahead of that, and maybe as early as April, we would be able to start construction. It would take about 12 to 14 months to construct, reconstruct the building.
Anybody want to take a stab at a motion?
Before we do, I have some conditions that we would typically recommend for something like this. The first condition we would recommend would be to limit the number of units to 205, acquire a lighting plan in compliance with the zoning resolution, a landscape plan in compliance with the zoning resolution, and I believe a signage plan in compliance with the approved signage plans for Governors Hill, because I believe their intent is to maintain the existing signage in the same locations at the same size.
And just reface it.
And just reface it, right. So maximum number of units, lighting, landscaping, signage is conditions one through four. They would need two variances, one to allow 18.85 units where 10 dwelling units is permitted, 18.85 dwelling units per acre where 10 dwelling units per acre is permitted, and then a second variance to allow the amenity area to be set back 24 feet where 40 feet is required, and the garage structure to be set back zero feet where 15 feet is required. So four conditions, two variances.
So Brian, in regard to the lighting plan, I think they stated that they're planning on using the existing lighting stanchions and just, you know, repairing, replacing them. So if they wanted to, I don't know what's there now, but I'm assuming it's probably mercury vapor or something like that. If they wanted to move to LED, would that be acceptable as long as they use the same stanchions?
They would just need to submit a lighting plan that complies with the lighting levels at the property line. We don't.
Right.
Regulate whether it's, what type of light fixture it is, just, no matter what it is, they have to comply with the property line limits.
Right.
I'll recommend, I'll make a motion. I'll recommend approval of the modification to the final development plan for case Sims 79-3 Governor Hill, Governors Hill Apartments, a request to convert the existing office building into 205-unit apartment complex and construct new parking garage buildings, swimming pools, and other amenities with the following conditions. One, submit a lighting plan to staff for approval. Is that in compliance, in compliance with the zoning resolution. Two, submit a landscape plan to staff for approval in compliance with the zoning resolution. Three, limit the number of units to 205. Four, submit a signage plan in compliance with the zoning resol, to staff for approval in compliance with the Governors Hill zoning resolution.
The Governors Hill signage plan.
Governors Hill signage plan, excuse me. Hope you're correcting me on the verbiage here. With two variances, variance on the density to 18.85 units per acre. I'd like to condition that with the applicant cannot, which is maybe redundant, cannot alter the size of the existing structure or the existing structured parking facility.
That would, I would suggest that be a separate condition, so condition number five, let the building not be altered or expanded.
But they are altering it.
Yeah.
I mean, are you just worried that they're increased the square footage of it to add more units?
Yeah.
Let the building not be increased in size.
There you go.
It goes without saying with the PUD, the fact that it's an APUD, but there's no reason you can't add it also.
Okay.
So that's five conditions.
And then you got to help me with the two, the other variance, with the setback variances.
Yeah, it's section 136.3-2 to allow the amenity area to be set back 24 feet from the front property line where 40 feet is required, and the garage structure to be set back zero feet from the side property line to the north where 15 feet is required.
What he said.
Yeah, what he said.
I'll second.
Yes.
Mr. Reichman?
Yes.
Mr. Edder?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Any old business? Having seen none? New business? None?
Is there a case next one?
No.
Unless you guys have some, we, I don't know.
Okay, good. I won't be able to come.
I don't think so, no.
So nothing for November?
Nothing I'm aware of.
Okay.
When's the deadline?
I think it's today, right?
Yeah, it would have been today.
Yeah.
The latest.
Okay.
Well, if there is a meeting, I won't be able to attend.
All right.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Reichman?
Yes.
Mr. Edder?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.